Welcome to the April 11 regular meeting of the Placerville City Council for April 11. Anyway, I'm gonna call to order and let's all rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That part's just... Okay. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins is noted as absent.
All right. Announcements, presentations to the public.
I'm fine.
Are you okay? Anybody in the city council wish to make any comments? Really?
I'll do a quick update on the Vietnam...
Oh, yes.
Monument. I'm happy to report that we've made good progress with it. Bruce Harkey and with his helpers got the concrete base poured for the monument and so we should now just be waiting for the actual granite work, which is already underway.
Very good.
So, making good progress down there.
Good. Good. That's good to hear. Okay. Anybody else? Any other announcements? Nope? Okay. Park and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Yule?
Mr. Yule is on vacation this week and I forgot to bring the flyer, but we have a... We will make sure that this information gets out. There's an upcoming meeting, a public meeting regarding the Parks Master Plan, and I apologize because I forgot to bring the flyer that says...
That's all right.
When that is, we'll make sure to... I think it's already up on our website and on Facebook.
I think it is, too.
You can find it there. And it's in the back window, too. So, you can see it there and we invite you to come out and weigh in on our Park Master Plan work.
Look forward to that.
All right. Rise and shine announcement.
Mr. Yule. Yule.
He's not here either. Okay. He's still not here.
It is on April 29. We also have Amy Sellers in the audience tonight who is helping us with that. Amy, would you like to speak now on that? Is that... Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the city council for once again sponsoring and approving the funds that we needed for the projects. As you know, we coordinate all the volunteer work, but the materials needed to come from the city, who's gonna benefit from that. So, we have some great, also great sponsors who are providing the tee-shirts and the lunches for this year. And last year, we had over 400 people come out and work and we got a lot done. And I think that's why you guys got excited and let us do it again this year. So, I love that we can work together as a community and kind of fill in some of the gaps where we, you know, can't do everything in our budget that we would like to do with our, with the budget that we have. So, this helps our community be a better place and we get to work together and have some fun and get to know our neighbors. So, thanks again. It's April 29th on the Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to about 1:00. Usually, we were done more like 12:00 and we had lunch afterwards. So, it was great. Do you have any questions about the event? You got it? Okay. Thank you so much.
Amy, I have one, real quick one. I know you've kind of changed the way you're organizing. Are you happy this year? In other words, you're doing a little differently?
On the registration, you mean?
Yeah. Is that... Are you getting registration?
It's working, yeah. It's working so that people know what kind of projects they're working... They can prepare better for it. And the shirts, we mixed up, that we end up switching sizes, everybody, every last year anyway. So, that, it kind of helped to be out to first year to figure out how many we needed, but other than that. We aren't gonna start with breakfast, so eat before you come.
Yeah.
That kind of slowed everything down. So, we're just gonna meet really quickly and then get to work and then we'll have a pause for lunch afterwards. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
I thought the new registration was fantastic. And it was really fun to look through the list of projects and kind of get in your head what the day would encompass.
Yeah.
And so, I thought that was just terrific. And just really want to thank you for doing it again. It was a fabulous day last year and really look forward to participating again this year. And, you know, thank you for working with our Park and Recs Department to make Placerville even more beautiful than it is.
Right, right. We just love it. All right.
Thanks, Amy.
Well, thank you very much. Two things on that particular issue. One is, as someone who ran a volunteer organization for a number of years, you never feed them first. Always feed them second. And if you're so inclined, you always keep the beer till the very end, because otherwise...
Really, John? On this one?
I'm just saying. If you're so inclined, I said that. The other thing is, there is...
We are having water early.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Well, hydration's very important.
Water's important.
And also, there is, one of the projects is painting, it says, "Painting the parking lot." Now, obviously, we're not gonna paint the parking garage. Stem to stern.
Wendy said she is.
Well, okay. Well, maybe we are.
Okay. Steve said that we had to have a professional contractor volunteer to supervise that crew. And we actually had someone volunteer, so he's out of town, but I think we're gonna let people paint the parking lot.
Well, no, no. And that's fine, but the idea was that, because it got out on the street, that once again, the evil geniuses that run this city were going to just shut down the parking garage for an entire weekend and that no one would be able to park and everyone would go out of business.
Oh, my.
And we're not doing that.
Gotcha.
I just want everyone to know that we're not doing that.
No, we're not doing that.
We're going to do it very strategically and the parking lot will have parts of it shut off, but there'll be plenty of parking and everyone can engage in commerce openly in Placerville.
Right. And I have a question about, I said something about the creek before and Cleve, I think you said, "This is gonna, part of this program, we're gonna clean up the creek and..."
We are planning to get, you know, get trash and stuff out of the creek. It may have already been washed out. And we're definitely only having adults work on that, not even teenagers on that.
Well, I didn't know if you meant in the water, so to speak, because I don't think we can, we can't enter the water. You mean along the banks?
Right.
Okay. Great. And so, we're gonna cut brush and stuff? Is that's allowed?
There are limits to what we can do there.
There are limits to what we can do. So, yes. Steve's got it all figured out and he's explaining to the crew from that.
Great. Okay.
You don't want to, yeah, don't mention that.
Don't go there.
It'll just happen.
It's on the website.
I know, but it'll just happen.
It's magic.
It's, yeah. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, once again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And we would like to introduce our new helper, associate engineer, Corey Sheestal?
Ooh, yay!
All right, I'm leaving. I'm done. Okay. But Rebecca, would you like to...
I'll be doing that.
Or, I'm sorry, I always mess this up. I'm sorry.
Just staff.
Hey, there you go.
Have at it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It is my pleasure to introduce Corey Sheestal, our new associate civil engineer in the engineering division of the Development Services Department. Corey's been working with us since March 27th. He began his professional career as an assistant land surveyor with Sage Brush Land Surveying out of Truckee, which sparked his interest in doing engineering work. From there, he enrolled at California State University Sacramento and earned his bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering. While a student, he worked as an intern assistant engineer for the Sacramento County Department of Transportation, working on roadway projects and design of traffic signals. Following his graduation, he worked for Sacramento County Department of Water Resources as an assistant and then as an associate civil engineer, working on design of drainage systems and water system supply improvement projects. His experience with Sacramento County DWR also included preparation of construction plans, project specifications, construction cost estimates, project construction management, and acquisition of necessary permits from both state and federal regulatory agencies. Corey brings about 10 years of professional engineering experience to the city of Placerville. We are fortunate that a professional engineer with these high credentials has chosen to join the staff here at the city. And with that, please welcome Mr. Corey Sheestal to the staff of the city of Placerville. Corey?
Welcome.
Okay. Well, good. I mean, if you want to say more, you can come to the podium. I'll put on the microphone and you get the sound.
Thank... Placerville's a beautiful town and I really appreciate the opportunity to, you know, be part of the community and hopefully make it better, even though it's already pretty great.
Well done.
But, you know, as an engineer, you always want to fix stuff and so, I really appreciate it and, you know, I'm really excited.
Good. Well, you'll have plenty of opportunities to fix stuff here in town.
We got lots of stuff.
You're in the right place.
Stuff you can't even see right now is gonna need to be fixed. So, yeah.
I just got an email from Comcast and I'm looking at it.
There you go. It's the never-ending journey here.
It's a Main Street one, too.
Congratulations and I know that Rebecca now is much happier to get some help.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just really excited to work with Rebecca so far. It's been really good.
Well, good. Well, you're joining a really good team, by the way, and so, don't mess it up. I'm sure you'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure to meet you, Corey. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Glad you're here.
Okay. Well, that's great.
That is good.
That's great. Okay. Do we have a...
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Close session report.
We did and the council did not take reportable action.
Okay. Would someone like to adopt our agenda?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We're fighting over the adoption.
Whoever.
Okay.
Mark and Patty.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have no ceremonial matters. Public comment. This is your opportunity to get up on anything that is not on the agenda. We cannot take action on anything that isn't on the agenda, except for very special circumstances. You have three minutes to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Be nice. Don't say anything that you wouldn't want to have somebody else say about you. Do we have any written correspondences?
None tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Any verbal renditions people would like to make?
Sue can't let this pass.
And it's okay, because we...
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. And I have two items to share with you tonight. Did anybody notice this marvelous article in The Democrat about Goldbug Park? That's the first thing I want to do, is congratulate Goldbug Park Development Committee and Placerville Park and Recs. This is the 2016 Champion of the Community Award of Excellence from the state Park and Recs Department.
Which Democrat was that in, Sue?
Let's see. Wednesday.
I'm sorry?
Wednesday, March 29th.
Okay. Yes, okay. I have it.
It was right after our last council meeting, so I saved it. I said, "Okay, this is wonderful." And they said, "This is in recognition of an organization that's contributed significant effort to influence and improve the quality of their community through parks and recreation." So, I am really glad that the state Park and Recs Society recognizes our wonderful and amazing Goldbug Park. Second, I'd like to amend my comments on the Johnson Controls Project from the city council meeting of March 28th. After further analysis of this proposal, it's clear to me that the only condition for moving forward on this solar array for our wastewater treatment plant is if Placerville is granted a state revolving fund loan with 50% forgiveness. With 50% forgiveness, the effect is a $3 million project for 1.5 million. Otherwise, the timeframe for a financial outcome is 60% of the expected lifespan of the project. There needs to be a much shorter time for positive return than 15 years. Even if Placerville had no other pressing needs, payback without that SRF 50% forgiveness is not financially wise. Given the facts that it will take about $2 million just to replace our failing Orangeburg pipes, our drinking water system delivers 25% into the ground instead of to the people, and 75% of our roads were failing or failed before this last winter's storms, we need very careful financial management. We cannot expect Measures H and L to pay all of our city costs. Our taxpayers expect and deserve excellent financial management for our historic hometown. We also must be sure that Goldbug Park stays the great attraction that it is and all of the other facilities are kept up. And with that, I'll bid you adieu.
Thank you, Sue. Would anybody else like to get up and say something? Yvette, this is your chance. You can... No? Okay. All righty. Well, that was nice. Okay, so let's move on from there. We have no ordinances? We have no public hearings? Wait a second. Did I skip?
Go to the consent.
We do have a consent calendar. I knew I was missing something big. Okay. The consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by a roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Does anybody, would anybody like to pull anything off of this wonderful consent calendar?
Nope.
Okay. Would the public like to comment about this?
Public's busy.
Excuse me. Can we, anyway? Your enthusiasm is wonderful. Keep talking to Sue.
You'll have a lot in common. You'll have a lot of conversations, I'm sure.
Yes, that's fine.
Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, Corey. Okay. We have no public comment on this.
I'll move for consent.
Second.
Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Okay. There were no items pulled. There are no ordinances. There are no public hearings. Discussion and action items. 12.1. Adopt a resolution retroactively approving an agreement with Carnahan Electric for the downtown camera project, Phase 1, in the amount of $13,827.59, and approving a budget appropriation from a general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures in the amount of $16,072 for the said project. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know you're well familiar with this, the project, the Placerville Downtown Camera Project that you adopted in 2015, funded by a $100,000 grant from Homeland Security Funds. And so, that project, Phase 1 of that project is moving along very well, as you're aware. That Phase 1 was a $40,000, the first phase was $40,000. And Phase 2, which will start in 1718 fiscal year, is a $60,000 phase. As Phase 1 is nearing completion, Carnahan Electric submitted an invoice to the city for electrical work, to run electrical and conduit to the cameras. And apparently, this was not included in the original project. Was unaware at the initial time when the project was initiated that that was not part of the covered work. And so, now, we have the invoice and so, that's hence the request to retroactively approve, because the work has already been done and so, we need now to pay the invoice. So, there was a surprise to us. Now, partial good news is that the $40,000 first phase was not totally expended. There was approximately $3,800 still available. And so, the Homeland Security Coordinator has agreed that we can apply that surplus to the cost of that bill. So, it brings the cost down to around $10,000 now for that Phase 1 electrical work. But, having that experience, we looked ahead at, the project was initiated by Chief Heller, but Commander Nida has been the one assigned managing that program. So, she very rightly looked ahead at Phase 2 and said, "What electrical work can we anticipate in Phase 2?"
Smart lady.
That won't be covered. And so, it turns out that the three cameras in, the three cameras on Main Street in Phase 2, they will need the same electrical work done and approximately $2,000 each, so a $6,000 cost to those. Hence, you see the total request for just over $16,000 to finish the project. And so, that's the nuts and bolts of that, our request then, is to retroactively approve the agreement with Carnahan for the downtown camera project, Phase 1, in the amount of $13,827.59, and approving the funding allocation from the General Fund Reserve for Economic Uncertainties for $16,072 for the downtown camera project, Phase 1 and 2 then. With that, any questions?
Does the council have any questions for the chief?
No, sir. Thank you, chief.
Okay. Nope? Okay. I know.
You look like you were drinking.
Jeez. How do you run my meeting? Okay. I was just wondering if I had any questions.
Yeah.
Okay. Does the public wish to comment on this item?
Public?
Okay. We'll bring it back here. I will ask a question. Real, I should know the answers and I could ask. Phase 1 cameras are where, again?
To look at the item, agenda item to tell you.
Okay.
It's all but the three cameras on Main Street. So, I believe it's seven. I'm looking for some help on that one.
Yeah. It is some cameras on Main Street. It excludes three on Main Street and the new cameras in the garage.
In the garage.
Phase 2 will be. Phase 2 is in the garage.
Is in the garage.
Plus three cameras on Main.
Plus three.
I think, I believe Phase 1 is seven cameras.
Seven cameras.
That's from my recollection.
But they're kind of on Main Street, sort of out there.
Yes. All the way from Cedar Ravine West.
Okay, fine. And then, there'll be, Phase 2 will be three in the garage.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, correct.
You see? There we go.
I know. Spurring lots of questions. So, I see that Phase 2 will be completed next fiscal year. Will, there was some questions with the downtown association. When will this project be up and running? Do we, is it, will all be up and running together or will Phase 1 be operational and then Phase 2?
Yeah. Phase 1 will be operational independently, on its own.
Okay.
So, it should be up and running soon.
Okay.
The monitors have also been purchased through Homeland Security Funds on a separate item. And so, those will be installed in the newly remodeled dispatch center and our dispatchers will be able to monitor them. So, that will happen. That will not wait for the completion of the total project. They'll be able to monitor the Phase 1 cameras.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move approval of this staff's recommendation.
A second. I am just so excited for this, but we've been talking about this for a number of years and I just think it's something that we're gonna really derive a lot of benefits from.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
I believe we are now... Council reports from other agency meetings, El Dorado County Transit Authority.
We met. We met. And I don't really have any report.
Okay. That's good. The Transportation Commission. Everyone will have a chance to weigh in on this, because there actually was quite a bit of things to talk about. The first and probably, well, there's two actually, and I know one's more important than the other, but one of them's more local, and that was Western Placerville Interchange. And so, can I talk? Yeah, we can talk about that.
Sure.
Okay. Western Placerville Interchange, Phase 2, there were some cost issues, you know, as the project matures, there's, estimates are made and the cost numbers go around. And there were some increase in costs in certain components of it. All of them have been covered. And one of the big ones was the actual money that we would have to augment, the STIP money with. But we have come up with some agreements between us and Caltrans and the county and Cleve can make, put out the details. But it was very good news for the city, because actually, the, actually, at the end of the day, the money that might have come from us has been taken down.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, working with EDCTC.
Right.
And we've come up with some solutions that will be coming back to the EDCTC board as a recommendation for approval. So, the only one that's been finalized is the Caltrans agreement. Well, it hasn't been finalized, but it's close. They've agreed to contribute $470,000, which was a big surprise to us.
Which was huge.
And Rebecca and I had a busy day last week in getting some funding from Caltrans and some other areas. So, it went very well and we're excited.
And also, that's one of the things from transit, is that they are also...
Yeah, true. I forgot that. Transit is contributing additional $165,000 towards the park and ride and the, some of the portions of their projects. So, overall, we think after the EDCTC meeting in May, Rebecca, is when they will approve the funding and at that point, we'll be set. And we still have to take it to the California Transportation Commission in June and then August for final approval, but we think we're on the right path to get it all done.
Right.
Question on that?
Yes.
Just for the audience and our television viewers, if we get that approval in August, when will we be going out to construction with this Phase 2?
We will be advertising for a bid around the end of fall, beginning of winter of this year and plan to start construction spring of 2018.
So, it's pretty immediate for a Caltrans highway type project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And for folks, both in the audience and out in the ether, just to give you an, this, Phase 2 is the eastbound off-ramp that will go up to Ray Lawyer Drive and a park and ride and then a realignment of the trail, because the project kind of monkeys around with the El Dorado Trail. And there's some other stuff, too.
Correct. It's the construction of an eastbound off-ramp at Ray Lawyer.
Yeah.
It includes, in order to make space for the grade that has to be accommodated, we have to realign Fornie Road.
Yeah.
It does include an El Dorado County Transit Authority park and ride lot. It also includes a gap closure connection for the El Dorado Trail, better known as locally as the jail trail. And we are, we are placing a Class 1 path there for that purpose, and some other ancillary improvements that are tied to the state highway system that are requirement as well.
Great. All right, great.
Folsom has our cash trail, we have our jail trail. I like it, yeah.
There you go.
I'd like to acknowledge Rebecca and Cleve, your efforts with Caltrans. You had a really long day that day, and, and was very successful, and thank you for your advocacy, and basically saving, you know, the city and county half a million dollars on that. So, well done.
One, one thing I could just mention, one of the things we found that should be of interest to Placerville is that Caltrans actually has a maintenance project, overlay project, going from Weber Creek to Carson Road that will do overlays on all four lanes, both directions, right, Rebecca?
Correct.
This summer, that'll take place this summer. So, from.
Highway 50.
Weber Creek on Highway 50.
Wow.
All the way up to Carson Road, a pretty substantial project. Grind and, grind and.
Fresh asphalt.
Yeah, they've opened bids already, they're getting ready to word the contract.
Okay, cool.
And that was news to all of us, which was very interesting, including higher-ups at Caltrans, they, they didn't even know about it, too, so.
I guess, I guess what we ought to be doing, though, and I'm sure we've already thought about this, is obviously, the portion that goes through downtown, disruptions to traffic, blah, 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 letting everybody know what's going on, so that, yeah. I mean, these kind of grind and overlay projects are fairly quickly done, but still.
Did you say there's going to be night, it's, I think night?
I don't recall, but I, I, I don't recall the details of the contract, how much night work is included. I would imagine, given the impact, that there would be some night closure work, but I'll work with the project manager with Caltrans to get their update on the project, and we'll release that as well as the regular project update on the website.
Very good. Just let everybody know what's going on.
Yes, absolutely.
And I guess the other big, I, what I thought was the big news, obviously, and everybody else saw was the big news, was of course, the state of California finally fig, they, they came up with a solution, SB 1, AB 1, for a transportation bill. And, and so, it's a basket, a garden variety of, of tax increases and fees and whatnot, and the details are being worked out in terms of the implementation. The, the numbers, and I don't even want to try to quote, like, it's this much of a gas tax increase, and this much of this, and the diesel, and the weight fees, and the registration stuff, because there's a lot of moving parts. It's supposed to raise like $5.5 billion or $6 billion. They say it'll be dedicated to transportation, and you can't monkey around with it. It's, it's, you know, we'll find out exactly what it means to the city, we've done some, oh, well, I could read that. It's a lot of things.
You don't have to.
And I don't have to know.
No, I, I just.
Yeah, anyway, so, so, anyway, yeah, there's a lot of things involved with it, and, but it is something, and it's not any, not, not my way of doing things, but they finally, finally did something, and they had to do something, and so, hopefully, it'll, 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 it'll bring some money that we need, increases in funding, and also, to start to backfill against the STIP, so, so, some of these projects can, that are sitting out in the state transportation improvement program can actually start to be done. Anyway, and you folks can comment on it as well, because you're on the committee.
Oh, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Since I'm not on the committee.
Yeah.
What are the projected new revenues, I'll ask the staff, the new projected revenues for the city of Placerville, and also for El Dorado County? Do they have a number that they're interested?
I just read that.
I participated in a CACOG webinar today. I don't know if you did that, Mayor?
No, I don't know.
They're telling us basically our gas tax or numbers that we're getting should approximately double. We're sort of thinking about an additional $250,000 a year.
Yeah.
And I want to say, El Dorado County is 6.9 million.
Yeah, that, that's a number that sounds, that number sounds about right for El Dorado County.
And again, they, they emphasize, these are all very early estimates, real rough numbers, because we don't know all the details.
Right.
There's a lot of, there is some competitive money in this, based on what the mayor had brought up previously, in terms of whether or not you're a self-help county.
Yeah.
I did find out that language is still in there regarding if you have a, a developer impact fee, such as our TIM fee, they referred to that actually for El Dorado County, that that should qualify, but it depends on, depends on the final outcome and the definitions and what they come up with, and how they implement this, for sure. So, anyway, that's, that's another piece that's out there, the potential other funds that could go for matching funds for projects, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and that's where you kind of want to get, weigh in, is the next, the next level of this thing is all the rulemaking and the stuff that goes through the CTC, so, we have to be vigilant in that regard, and keep our eye on those crumbs that we tend to get out of the state, and make sure they're healthy-sized crumbs, anyway. You have something to say? Would you like to say something?
I would. I just want to announce that May is Bike Month.
Oh, I, you know, I had a T-shirt, and I, and I left it on the bed.
So, mostly, how I, what I'm going to tell you is how we're affected. There's, on May 13th, it's a bicycle rodeo and family ride, and the location will be at Chanel School, and it's from 9:00 to noon.
Yeah.
And then, May 19th is Bike to Work Day with the mayor of Placerville. And that's Mosquito Road Park and Ride in Placerville at 7:00 AM.
Nice.
And then, May 23rd is the annual Great Bike Ride, and that's the one where everybody meets at the government center, and they, they trek up to the county, and, and I don't know the exact route, but it's from noon to 1:00, and it's, it's a fun time, and then they provide lunch.
Yeah.
Usually go down the trail to 40 Road, and then back up and down to the, to the bridge, and then back up to the county office, down to Weber Creek.
Okay. The bike, the biking with the mayor thing, right now, what we're thinking about doing is biking like from, from Mosquito Road up to the Smith Flat House. Fun. And having like a morning beverage, and, and then coming downhill back to town. That's kind of it. Or we might go in a different direction, but we're, we are going to have something, we'll try to get it advertised, so we can get folks to join.
Do you have a time period that you need to do?
In the morning.
I mean, it starts at 7:00, so.
That's awfully early. Yeah, 7:00, I, I could do 7:00. I, I get up at 7:00.
What do you, is that? What I didn't know is if you were going to accommodate people that have to go to work at 8:00 or 9:00 or whatever.
Yeah, this, that whole work thing's kind of foreign to me, but okay. 7:00, 7:00, and we'll, we'll, I haven't made the details, but Jackie Noe and.
All right, it's not until May 19th, so you got time.
And Jerry Barton and I are, we're all kind of going to, they'll, they'll come up with something and tell me what to do. Okay. Anything else?
Shoot, I have to buy a bike for that.
I know.
I want a bike with you.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to show up on my, on my BMW, it might not be quite right. Okay, Lafco.
We didn't meet this month.
Okay. Uh, CACOG, we're, I mean, most of it, the stuff we talked about, we've talked about already. I am going to be going, though, to a infill workshop on Thursday down at CACOG, and they're having a bunch of people talk about it and stuff, and I'm kind of curious about what the latest thinking is on that, and it, they use the word redevelopment, don't go crazy out there, and it's not going to make a redevelopment agency, but, but they, you know, they're, it's kind of an intriguing thing for us here in town, some of the possibilities, I think, are quite attractive for folk.
It'd be great.
Little towns like Placerville and, and stuff. So, anyway, I'm going to go to that, but otherwise, I don't have anything to report. Although, the new executive director, James Corliss, is, is now in the building. He, he has taken over, and.
Good.
And he's actually going to come up here and visit with us in some point here in the not-too-distant future to chat about our stuff. So, anyway, so, that's CACOG. Sedcor?
Uh, one more meeting.
Okay. Uh, two by two.
We spent a great deal of time just talking about the Western Placerville Interchange, and what, what the possible options might be. We coordinated with the county on trail, on the trail issues, and especially looking at the county also adopting a new, new camping ordinance, they've, they're, they've been trying to, to work on that, and it's currently illegal right now. So, those were the main topics we.
And the homeless issue.
And the homeless, yeah, the homeless issues go along with the trail issues. So, yeah.
Okay. I think that's it. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Anybody, anything they want to talk about? Okay. Uh, city manager and staff reports.
I'll just report on a couple of things that I have. One, I want to report, I had a good meeting with Councilmember Acuna and Vice Mayor Thomas regarding our trail and future plans of how we can continue the work that has been done on the trail, and we, as a staff, are going to put together some things based on that meeting, and bring back for the council to review, and how we can continue to work to make that truly the amenity that it's designed to be in our community. So, we'll be coming back with some recommendations on that.